Most recently in March and before that council, unless it's the open house in November, hasn't really seen this since then. So just to give you some updates from where we started and where we're at.
And I'm sorry I made it super quicky, but can the mayor actually call the meeting to order?
Oh, yep, sorry.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order in a minute, second.
Thanks, Amy. So initially, we started this work after it was approved on June 27th of last year. Kind of really kicked off with the September 7th work session that planning commission held to kind of run over land use transportation and the design standards. That had some recommendations that came out of that that we then used to move to the public feedback side. So we then moved into the October 23rd and we held a three week long online survey. They got a couple hundred responses along with an open house that we held at the Dayton Community Center up in Historic Village on November 29th. That was pretty heavily attended too with about eighty to a hundred depending on number of people there. So that's kind of how what we've done so far. In March, we came back with a draft of the planning commission and the recommendation from the planning commission was to get council and planning commission together. Hold this work session to go over specifically land use. So within the master plan boundary area, today's discussion is going to be framed around land use specifically. I won't really talk about or touch on the other components as land uses kind of drive some of those factors afterwards. And we'll make the necessary updates to the plan after this work session. So I will talk specifically about land use only within the master plan boundary areas. We're not looking at the land uses outside of that. This is kind of a special study area for within that. And some of the goal, this is one of the primary goals was to kind of look at that land use that was directed back in June. So I think it's kind of important to go through this. So as we're on the screen, I sent out with the staff report and some maps, essentially four land use maps. There's the existing land use map. It's good for context to know where we're coming from. And this is the adopted land use, future land use. So this is the one that will be utilized until we update the comprehensive plan. And then three options, and I'll kind of, I should probably scroll through, run through so you can see what I'm talking about. Option one was essentially the future land use map for the master plan that was presented the planning commission at their March 7th meeting. So this is what they reviewed and felt that it needed some further discussion. So that's option one. Option one keeps the, so we're going to talk kind of about density as well for the, specifically for the high density. So high density in this case stays at the same density range we currently have it in the future in the comprehensive plan for the future land use, which has a minimum of fifteen units an acre. Option two and three, which I'll show here, bump that up to twenty units an acre for the density. And why that matters is essentially because you have more density within the land use. You don't need as many acres to hit your number of units that you need to get to meet the met councils through units an acre across the city wide. So when I'm talking about units and things like that, the existing, the tables that were in the materials that we sent out, there's this total unit capacity of 5,023 within the master plan boundary area. That's the number we kind of work out or that I was working off of because we have to hit or exceed that number within the master plan boundary. No matter how we configure the land uses and the density, we have to make sure we're at above 5,000. Otherwise, we run into, we're potentially going below three units an acre citywide. So because there's 5,000 units in there to start today on the existing land use plan, we have to hit that with whatever changes we make going forward. So option one that we brought to planning commission was at 5,211, so just slightly above that 5,000. So we're still good there. All of these are good for the density, but I just want you to know where and why we're trying to keep a lot more high density in this areas because we're required to do so based on the low density that's elsewhere within the city. Option two, and preface this by saying, planning commission didn't ask to have some more where the density ranges were increased in high density residential to allow for maybe a little more medium density and low density residential. And then an option that also increased the high density residential to allow for potentially a business park or office type use. So this, this option two is the one that allows for more medium and low density residential. So a couple areas that have changed on here. As you look from the southeast corner of the master plan boundary coming in, there's a lot more transition from low density with some more low density in the master plan boundary area, more medium density, and then still some high density adjacent to the town center mixed use in the commercial. There's also some more medium density on the northeast and northwest corners in this version as well. And then that still hits at 5237, so over the required threshold we need to hit. And then the third option introduces a little more medium density residential and some business park, which is a kind of the, the non-heavy industrial, but still business industrial land use. That's in the southwest corner as that's the, the most applicable area to transition to have some more industrial. And then you'll notice on the southeast corner, there is more medium density residential. And on the northwest corner, there is more medium density residential to transition into the town center commercial area. So those based on the direction that planning commission gave us, gave staff, were put together. And then I'd be looking for input on what you like or don't like, or which way you'd want to pursue these. I mean, they're all viable options to go with option one, two, or three. And they're, based on your feedback, I can look at other options as well. The really, the only thing we need to hit is we need to make sure we have over that 5,023 unit capacity. There might be a little wiggle room in there, but I'd rather just air on the safe side and stay above that. I think twenty units an acre from a, from a development perspective is probably the highest we can go on the low end for high density residential. Otherwise, you could start excluding some projects that may not be able to hit a higher unit density. So if you bumped it to 25, there are projects that come in. And I did do calculations on about six or seven of the recent multifamily projects I worked on, on where they fell in the density range to make sure that when we bump, if we bump it from 15 to 20 units an acre, that's still viable from a development perspective because the last thing you want to do is get a good project in that we can't approve because our density range is too high. And all of them were close or did meet it. I mean, there, there were only two that were under 20 and they were at about 19.6. So they were very, very close to hitting that 20. So I don't think we're excluding too many projects. If we did bump that up to 25, I think there were four, four that would not be able to meet that. So I think we're safe bumping it to 20, but I wouldn't go any higher on that low end density range, which means we're probably stuck with a certain number of high density residential acreage within that master plan boundary area.
So what does 20 units an acre look like in a building?
So in a building, for example, most buildings are going to be four stories. They're going to be one grade below three.
Twenty units an acre, it's almost always three story.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's still going to be a three story.
Thirty units an acre, now it's a four story. And the importance of a four story is if you want one park install per unit below grade, they can do that. If you get more than four stories, you just, there's too many units to meet that demand. You can get in a little bit of trouble still if you say it was all small one bedrooms. You still might be in trouble trying to get one stall per parking per unit, I should say, which is our code. But usually it's not going to be all one bedrooms and Dayton, it's not going to be all one bedrooms.
And usually just mark additions in the building code restrictions on multifamily, you're going to only pretty much see three stories over one story of structured parking in Dayton because once you go to four stories above ground, then you start getting into building code requirements for different construction and materials. And it becomes much more expensive to construct. So there has to be the market and the rents to support that.
Because we require, yeah, because we require the one grade of underground parking, most, most developments are going to target four stories.
Right, four stories.
Above ground, no, four stories above ground. That's what they did in Rogers. That's what the presentation was, the one on, on the other side of the freeway, four stories too.
Yeah, they'll start.
Above ground, four stories above ground, four stories of units. So when we think of above ground, you should be thinking of where the units are.
So those, those would be similar to the one, the apartment buildings you already have. So ball's a point. But I'm saying that, that type of development can still hit 20 units an acre.
Yeah, the 20 is three.
Yeah, and that's the other thing when you think about the units per acre in this area means a little different because it's, you know, going to be more compact. But how much open space do you really want with multifamily? In certain areas, it's more appropriate because you're isolated, you want green areas. But if you're kind of creating a little bit more urban center, I'm a bigger fan of not have the open space on the project itself, but have it as park space because park space doesn't even go towards our density calculations. And so have more park space that surrounds it than the itself. So if you did that, you'd actually could easily do more than 20. But that's what part of discussion, what do you really want it to look like?
Yep, yeah, because there are, this is all based on net density. So gross density is essentially the size you have 48, say, divided by the number of units you can put to that amount acres. That's gross density. Net takes out everything that wouldn't, that's basically considered unbilled or undevelopable. So park is undevelopable because it's a park. Open water, wetlands, steep slopes, arterial roadways, those are all taken out of the calculation. That's where you get to that final net density. And that's typically what you see when you get a final plat application in for an apartment building. That's the density you'd see. When you get concepts in and you're reviewing concepts in that stage, you're probably going to see mostly gross density because we don't potentially know all those final acreages for how big the wetlands are, what kind, what size park will be with the development, that kind of thing. So these are all based, or that final number would be the, the net density.
So building off of what you just said, so if the park, we've got a park in this area. Is the park in the right place, I guess, number one? And if it is, then does the density, because we've got several kinds of zoning around that park. Is that, is that correct with that sort of?
I guess the question is what, what do you want in the park? You know, so Long French Lake and there's a lot of lowland that falls along the lake. And then you've got kind of a ridge. So I mean, there's a nice natural area along the lake. But if you want more, you know, active recreation, however you want to define that, that's going to be up on top. So.
So the existing comprehensive plan had a park search area essentially.
About there.
Right on the center, so if I use the cursor, basically right in here.
Well, and there's that little strip of DNR land.
Right, so from a staff perspective in terms of just like acquiring the park, there's already the DNR strip there. So he felt placing the park adjacent to that made sense from a, just a planning perspective, along with the fact that the, the preferred styles of town center and things like that led to an open space. It's part of the survey results on both the open house and the online survey. So the, the land use flow of this plan at least, all, and all three do keep that same flow in terms of the mixed use, commercial and the park. Basically keeping the commercial on the corridor, leading it into the mixed use, which is identified as the town center mixed use. So it's supposed to be Dayton's town center that's utilized by its residents. Leading into a park was kind of the most apt fit. It'll then allow the, the mixed use to transition into a park space. However.
Kind of purple is the mixed use?
Mixed use, yep.
Yep.
So I think first floor commercial, maybe likely apartments, maybe office, but likely apartments above it.
But it allows quite a vast array of uses. So it'll kind of, depending on how and when it gets developed, it's more the built form of it and less the uses that are.
The one thing that, I mean, we're obviously just looking at a flat two dimensional map. But when you look at the topography map, I think that's one thing we probably got to do a better job of trying to incorporate in here because west of the existing East French Lake Road, it's flat for a little bit. But then halfway through that orange medium density area, there's a big slope that goes down to the lake. And whenever you have big slopes, you know, it's going to play with things with what you can put on it. And, you know, you can put anything anywhere at a cost, I guess, but I'd like to see some of those things retained if possible and not, not too altered. And that's a heavily wooded area.
Yeah, so there, there, it's not on the, the future maps, but the existing one, there's essentially, so you can see the green hash is the greenway overlay corridor. So that's essentially where we're looking at natural resources that would, the intention is to preserve some of them as development occurs. And on the very, I'll call it west edge of this corner right here, there isn't a topographical change in that there's a knoll right there, a pretty significant knoll, which is why none of the corridors we have on the future land use go through that area because of the grading that would have to take place to do any major roadways through that area.
Yeah, you should make a note that when we, whatever plan we adopt for the master plan, we got to get the green lines overlay. For example, like where you added the low density, I think in option two.
Yep.
That's all, I shouldn't say all, but a lot, a lot of that's not very developable. That's the greenway, that's, there's fact that open body of water there and stuff like that. We should get that on there, so it's just.
Yeah, I took it off so you could see the land use scatter.
Yeah, but you can't, yeah, because the land use can't really go there if you can't physically put it there, so.
I mean, with the greenway overlay, typically low density would be the most apt.
Right, I guess what I'm trying to say too is that won't even factor into the density calculations because that, I mean, it's not huge, but there's an open body of water there and wetlands.
But no matter which residential category you put on there, it would still be factored out of the density.
Or if the, some people decide to target that as another park area.
Yeah, I mean, that could be. It's not identified for park right now, so we, I didn't think of that as a factor just because I don't want to overload our, you know, I have a budget based on how many parks are identified now, so. We could certainly look if that's a viable option to move the park. But I'd be looking to you guys for feedback on kind of, at least for now, what, which of the three options you like the best or which pieces of those three options you like the best, what changes? Because the goal for this is essentially that I can go back with, and with John, and we can put together essentially a final version that would come through planning commission and city council for approval. That's our next step really, is to go to bring it back. That, we're kind of at that point now. Along with, before we brought it back to that, we have the open house that we have on the schedule. It's been delayed since what we initially thought. But to have that final open house so that everybody that came to the November 29th one, see what kind of draft version we have. We can still make changes then, but I'd like to have something where we feel good about the land use to bring forward to the open house and then to future meetings. So that's kind of the goal of tonight is to get to the point where you've given us enough direction that we can put together a future land use plan.
Just to point a clarification, what's, what's, is this ag preserve?
Ag preserve.
Why, I guess my question is, why is that one ag preserve?
Because it would take outside of our future land use, so when you are in the ag preserve, to come out of the ag preserve, you have to give.
So it's in it today, that's why.
Correct, and it has no expiration date identified, which means they haven't even applied to pull it out. And there's an eight year timeframe before you can pull it out of the ag preserve. So at minimum, if they submitted tomorrow and said, we want to come out of the ag preserve, they're not going to be out of it for eight more years. So we typically don't show anything on there until they've at least initiated expiration.
Now, most of this, well, not most, but a good chunk of this is owned by deans who just came through last week or last month to get a event center thing. And like, that's a thirty years, thirty years.
Thirty years, yep.
Three zero, and that's a good chunk of this, so.
Can be thirty years.
Years, but like.
Not necessarily, though, I mean.
Yes, but my point is they clearly intend to be here. Like they have every intention of being here, that was their request, right?
Isn't that 2050 land, though, in the staging plan?
So yeah, I didn't include the staging plan as part of the package, but it is part of the conversation, I guess, the bottom. And this might just help to your comment.
To your point, Sarah, that's out there with, with their buildings, I guess.
Most of this is 2030. It's 2030 on the bottom portion, I'm just going to paraphrase, 2040 and then 2050 or post 2050, so.
But that's not the event center part of it.
Oh, that's true.
The earliest we'd expect anything in the master plan to develop is 2030. And then it would just move from south to north according, or like with our current staging plan, it would move south to north with the north part being post 2050. So a lot of this isn't going to get developed for 30 years.
For 30 years.
I noticed in the, in the master plan that it's not apples to apples, that's why I'm bringing this question up. But you said that the staff says that 20, in 2030, by 2035 was the Dayton Parkway extension, which was originally was the extension going kitty corner across the city before the Dayton Parkway shifted.
Yep.
Is the intention that staff still thinks that this Dayton Parkway is going to get extended by 2035? Is that, is that why that was in there like that? Because I think that was the reference being made.
In which map?
Not in the map, in the narrative, in the narrative of the plan, draft plan.
I think, yeah, based on the staging that we expect things to happen on between the categories, the south side being 2030, the middle kind of being 2040 and then post 2050, we do expect that at least to start moving.
North, yep.
Around that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the expectation, that's kind of what we're.
Yeah, I'm anticipating, dude, that's going to be a question at the next open house, that's why I just.
Yeah, it'll ultimately be driven by development, but that's how we're anticipating it based on.
And the reality is none of this, none of this, besides the low density to the east can even happen until Dayton Parkway's, well, I can't, I can't imagine how it's going to happen until Dayton Parkway is extended.
I mean, we're realist, realistically, we're 20, 30 years old on all of it.
Well, unless the Parkway gets extended, well, right, the first thing that's going to happen is a road, whenever that is, whether that's 10 years, quicker or later, whatever it is, that's what's first.
My real question is, is this alignment of the roadway, do we have to have that as the, first off, this whole change on how the Parkway came through is, it still boggles me how that ever happened. First off, this whole change on how the Parkway came through, it still boggles me how that ever happened. In my opinion, this thing should have came way over this way and lined up this way instead of coming right through all this property that, it's going to be twenty, thirty years before we get it. Or they die, one of the two. Can we not put a roundabout here and a roundabout here and make a straight line to here instead of going through all these properties?
Not with the amount of traffic that's going to come through.
Yeah, so we basically, we have the two landing points.
Roundabouts in major cities.
A and B essentially, which is where it's constructed here, and then we have to land here. And based on orientation of the existing roadways, land use, changes in the area along with topographical conditions, this is really the only viable route to get. I mean, then you can, this is a fat line, so it will not look exactly like this. It might jog a little further north and then go to the east. But generally, this S curve makes the most sense because there are, I mean, this area here, we want to avoid based on the topographical conditions in there. And then, so basically having it here and then trying to line up here would go right through that area. So this, from an engineering and constructability standpoint, along with land use and the corridors and the goal of moving traffic with also being able to direct it to the town center area made the most sense. And that was the alignment that was adopted as part of the transportation update that was done back in.
Eighteen or something like that.
Well, that one and then the realignment that happened in October of last year or whenever that happened.
I just think we are hamstringing ourselves with this alignment.
I'm with Scott and Dennis, but unless someone's going to change it, I guess I don't know what else to do. I think we either got to drop the conversation or commit the change in it.
I mean, I, I'm on the same page with you guys, and I brought this up before that.
It just seems like, even though, yeah.
That was shoved down the throat because somebody wanted it that way.
Even though it's built, even though it's built and we have utilities there, and I get, I totally understand all of that, we can, we still have an opportunity. This is a small change compared to what that is.
Yeah, that's my question. Why can't we just, if that's stupid, move that? That's not that much.
And, and. Just so that I'm clear, you're talking about the section that's already built.
Yep.
South of one hundred and seventeen.
And when this land use got brought up, that was my, my recommendation was to bring this, or this master plan, was to bring this down, almost all the way down to territorial because that's the major component. We know where Zanzibar is on the north side. We don't know how we're getting there.
Right. Yep. Yeah, I, I think what it is, is at least for me, is for years I've said, we got to fix this alignment. And it just seems like it gets ignored. And it sounds like more people are in agreement. And here we are. We're years past it. We're still.
We're still good. We're going to try to fix, we're going to make them another mistake on top of a mistake.
Unfortunately, we're, we have to choose if, which mistake is worse now, because if we change it, there's a, obviously it's a lot of money.
So the S curve that's, that you want to change, I mean, what is the reasoning for changing that?
Because I don't see it getting past one hundred and seventeen for a decade or more.
This is the opposition of the property owners?
So if you look at the observation of the properties along the French Lake here, these are all single family residential.
High dollar.
High dollar acreage lot homes that, and also speaking in, into what is unique and characteristic about Dayton, that's it right there. It's this. That's what people want. Sarah, you moved here for a similar sized type of lot as some of these bigger ones.
Yeah.
That is what we want to preserve. This is farm field. There's a few homes, there's a few homes on these parcels, but these are large acre parcels that can be a lot more manipulated, divided up, easier, easier to cut through in my set.
It also seems like that.
Once this starts developing, I mean, there's, well, we've got fifty two, fifty three hundred homes, so that's going to be, I'm going to say twelve, fifteen thousand people. You know, the people that are living in this square mile, are they still going to want to live here once this starts developing?
There's, there's.
It is a fair question.
There, there is, if, it is. But if you look at Maple Grove, you look at Plymouth, you look at Medina, the big acreage lots are still high dollar, high value lots, and they're multi million dollars now, not seven hundred and fifty.
Because the land value is driving the value.
Understood.
But people are clearly still going to buy it.
People are still.
Yeah, and they're choosing to, the buyers are choosing to maintain the use in some circumstances versus redevelopment. And that's really, if you want to preserve something, is the reason for the buyers to, the buyer to preserve it, not the, not the city or anyone else, it's the buyer.
I think there's another liability here, but in, where the red was, we assessed heavily those properties. And now we're.
Out the door.
Yep. Now that's out the door and we're.
And it's out the door because the road shifted, not because.
Well, that may be, but the assessments were based on future land value. I'm telling you, if I'm one of those red, in the red there, I'm making a phone call.
Have you guys told staff to look into what it costs so you can make a decision on whether it's really worth to redo it? I mean, I think that's the next step.
Again, this.
Because if you guys want it redone, we.
Over and over again, and it just seems to be blown off.
Yep.
And if we can hear reasons that you, here's why we can't do this. I haven't heard those yet. And now we have this vertical road there. What is that between?
On the purple, there's a vertical road. Why is that there?
Oh, in the, in the, yeah, that guy. Where'd that come from?
That was planning commission.
Straight Neo, East West French Lake Road.
West French Lake Road. So this is still shown as here because it is right away currently. But it's being realigned to make a straight north south connection for a safer intersection here.
Yeah, that probably makes sense. Just seems odd because, you know, that's not too far from where the other road was.
Does that one hundred and twenty first go all the way to Fernbrook? I can't tell the dotted one.
This, right, it does not, so the map's not zoomed out big enough, but there is a wetland complex about right here.
Which makes it really hard to get through.
So this is intended to be from here and then as it goes past here, it's going to jog. I think conceptually, we had it south of the wetland, but that, that is entirely up to which way is more feasible.
The most logical route these roads are going to take because of topography, and you can see the pole creek, that's the lower area, is that this road is going to bend down this way and this road's going to bend up that way. It's the most logical. And we talked about it, but it's outside the master plan area, so we just left it. But that's the most logical. The road's going to bend down, bend up.
And that north south road on the right there, is there topography problems with shipping that over more towards the?
So I'll just say like this, all of this, we didn't really study because it was outside the master plan boundary. So that'll come up with a comprehensive plan. So there is a north south connection shown based on the fact that there's a creek here. We probably don't want to cross it, stuck it here in between property lines. That is just conceptually what it was, but.
We should probably take that off for the public presentation, because we don't need to make commitments like we were going to it. Just drop the line at the end of the master plan and call it a day.
Yeah.
So stupid question. So obviously it got moved, the.
Dayton Parkway.
The, where was it supposed to be?
See the purple and red, all the curve? It was supposed to follow that natural curve.
Okay. And so.
It just basically made a nice sweeping up to Zanzibar.
Yeah.
And in my, I mean, I'm even looking at the area here, and the property on the other side of the, the pond there has a road almost going right straight into the roundabout on the south side of the.
Right at the intersection of one hundred and seventeen.
Right here.
Right.
I mean, you can, you could, you can see a nice envision right here on the south side.
So I guess, before we get too far in the conversation, so this is, we, so I'll just kind of back up. This was the landing point. I could never consider an alternative because we have the existing infrastructure there. And I don't, that's not my expertise to do a feasibility study. That would be Jason and his team to be able to analyze what it would take to move to wherever it would land, east of where it is now in terms of financial, right away, gathering the necessary right away, whether it's through whatever means due to, whether it's development or another means to get the right away. It didn't even occur to shift anything with that because we don't have any of the data to show if that's even possible from a financial standpoint for the city or from a feasibility standpoint in terms of working of all the various property owners to gather the right away needed for that. So I think if that's, if that's truly the way you want to go, it has more implications outside of just the master plan. And, and basically that would have to be studied before we want to finalize the master plan, I guess is what I'm getting at. Because if that were to shift, that would obviously change quite a few of the conversations within the master plan boundary area.
Those plans are changed three, four times before anything happens anyway.
I want to overlook that, Scott. I think the road alignment is, that's the most important thing that we need to get right. The land use is absolutely, they'll be changing until they get developed.
So I'm hearing from at least two council members that you want us to look at shifting the road?
I think you can say three.
Three.
You got to fix the problem.
In my, I want to be just clear. I understand one thing on this or this process. So as far as I can tell, we can draw anything we want on this plan because we're not amending the comp plan with this. The intent is to use this as a guide until the next iteration of the comp plan. And then it would be incorporated into that, into that next comp plan. So we're not going to the Met Council. We're not doing any of that with this because we know this is planning for future.
Yep.
So we can draw that road on there anywhere we want at this point. I mean, we get, we need to get to a point that makes sense to everybody, right? Otherwise you can't do the, you can't do the zoning. And so why don't, why don't we do that? I don't, I don't have the history or know individually these landowners. So, you know, I don't know what makes sense or what's possible there either, but why don't we draw the ideal on there and, and see where that takes us?
I think, I mean, in my opinion, you always start with the ideal and worry about the property owners later because they might move and might get hit by a bus, whatever, we don't know. Start with the ideal and then deal with later. What I would suggest if you do that, and you guys should weigh in, but I would suggest that when you give them some numbers to redo it, maybe give them the number to extend it to one twenty fifth. Because the idea is, we're not going to, if you, if we realign it, we're not going to reconstruct it until one twenty fifth is extended probably, unless the DDL property becomes a major issue.
Say that again?
So the DDL property is the main property it's going to go through.
Yep.
But we, there's no need to redo it unless we're extending it to one twenty fifth. Or maybe DDL is hot to trot that they want to develop their property. And so my point being of understanding the cost to extend it, rough estimates versus the cost to just move it, is what if the cost to move it's only five percent of the total project? It might be easier to swallow than, than if it's, you know, twenty or thirty percent.
Well, is the, this is my consensus, is the proper alignment to come off of here and get over this way.
Follow the original.
Come right up through here.
Yeah, following the original.
Well, there may be a modification of that and that you do maybe rate as you get up to one seventeenth to get the roundabout and then there's another.
Okay, does it appear, Jason, if there's a roundabout right there at one hundred and seventeen?
The other thing not to, the other thing not to get lost in this, but we've got a hundred million dollar property, the cubes, that's going to impact their access. So don't forget about that. I don't think it's going to impact it bad. It's just going to make their driveway longer, which might be a good thing. But it's going to impact it because right now Dayton Parkway goes right up to their driveway. If you shift Dayton Parkway, they just driveway needs to.
Not necessarily. I mean, you could leave, you could leave.
You could leave what's there.
You could leave the infrastructure that's there today.
It might be cheaper to.
And you might actually want to narrow it a little bit as far as like what's out there. But you could leave that there today. If you sweep way around to the other side, those two connection points on one hundred and seventeenth are pretty fairly far apart.
So the sweep would kind of start at the existing roundabout?
It would start at the roundabout.
Exist, yep.
At least the way I would envision this.
The existing road would become East French Lake Road, really. And then Dayton Parkway keeps moving to the.
Yep, so my guess.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I could.
Something like that.
That's what it was.
Now, DDL's not something like that.
And then Dayton Parkway has a more gradual sweep.
These guys here?
Yeah, intersection. Already has a four way with it.
Yeah, it just seems stupid to compound a dumb decision with more dumb decisions when now is the time to correct. And like you said, leave, you know, don't take out what's there, but just put what was supposed to be there.
You could narrow it up a little, that, that existing Dayton Parkway from, from the roundabout up to one hundred and seventeenth. You could, you know, so it's less maintenance.
Yeah, you don't have to do it right away, but when that day comes, you can do it.
Yep.
I think the biggest, just want to praise her mind and damages, but I think the biggest issue is going to be dealing with the DDL property. Because that's where the road's going to go through now. They're already talking to staff. I don't know what they've been talking to staff about, but they've had ideas to staff.
I thought they were talking.
Well, so there's an EAW and there's nothing beyond that. But essentially for DDL, like as soon as they have a buyer, they're going to develop.
They want to go this year.
Yeah.
Their intention is to start this year if they find a buyer.
Well, buyer's not going to start this year if they haven't had a contract.
Not already.
Not if they don't have, they didn't have that run contract for a while to start yet this year.
Well, what about, I can't get my map up here quick enough, but not necessarily taking the old path, but looking at a roundabout right at one seventeen and then following one seventeen.
East?
East, past the junction, and then another roundabout up.
That's what I was suggesting, but Jason said you can't do it.
Oh, too much traffic.
So.
I think someone else said.
Oh, Jason. Yeah, at some point, yeah, you could blame Jason though for what I said. That's fine.
I can blame Jason.
So I mean, at some point in time, like there's going to be a river crossing and maybe it'll be in our lifetime or maybe not.
Even if there's not a river crossing, I think that at some point in time, that design that Dennis and Scott mentioned, it won't be ideal.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is going to be the busiest road in Dayton.
It won't be ideal at some point in time.
Well, I mean, right now with those curves, isn't it, isn't it kind of make it a forty mile an hour road?
It's a pretty long distance.
Thirty five.
No, I think that's still a fifty five.
The road in place is a forty five mile an hour design.
This one?
What's been built today. Yeah. What's beyond that I would expect is at least that. But again, this isn't, this isn't designed. This is shown.
That's just a idea.
But keep in mind, this is probably pretty close to what's out there, and this is designed at a forty five mile an hour.
So it's probably a forty five.
Or bigger, as long as there's not steep hills or other obstacles, it would be at least forty five. You could definitely plan for it.
I also, I also think that the one hundred and seventeenth junction there with Parkway and one hundred and seventeenth is going to be periodically a mess with traffic at some point. And, and I don't know if it becomes a four way or, or what, but because you're going to have all kinds of people coming from the east, making a left in the morning and vice versa.
Truck traffic from the west.
Traffic from the other side. So.
I expect.
I mean, we always talk about roundabouts as leaving.
Prenominantly for that matter. I mean, another thing to think, just so we don't get too hung up on when this could go, I mean, certainly another option, exactly what you're describing. Roundabout here, intersection, maybe it's a roundabout here and you plan on extending this north. This can get filled in later. You just stub it north. You stub this west, you fill in that cap when it's.
Oh, I see. So the roundabout.
So you're basically creating your bypass and then you're, you're dozing through when your traffic levels build and you want the traffic to flow and maybe that's the timing.
We'd still have to fish a roundabout in there though, right? But, yeah.
You don't have to, but it would, I mean, that might be a good intersection controller.
Where's the DDL property?
It's the three, so it's just one, these three in a row.
Okay. Those three colors.
More vertical ones to the.
Okay, so that, that would be affected by the roundabout that's there now.
It would, but I thought there was a wetland in there anyways.
Or realigned, is that where?
Well, no, that's what I'm getting at is if you, if you, if you continued the Parkway off of that roundabout that's already built, just like.
Yeah, if you continued after roundabout, you'd end up not that far over. You'd actually have to peel it back. There's the roundabout.
Too generic there.
Goal is to get further.
There's a wetland kind of between those first two on the left. So it's, so the roundabout would be.
On the west side of it.
On the west side, which I'm not sure they can make use of it anyway.
Yeah, the roundabout would have to shift east and or north to fit in there, just because of the infrastructure with the cubes. But you get to something in. I mean, there's land around there. Obviously, the north is impacted by residents.
The roadway is the most important piece of this whole master plan. That's got to be in place before, before you talk about anything else.
Dayton Parkway as well as we can't forget about those other roads that are slicing through there that we have to dash lines on. Those are so important too for feeder roads that are not part of our current transportation plan. That should be. But we can figure those out later. The key is Dayton Parkway.
So if, for now, buying, to buy time. So if, if for now, buying, to buy time, a couple of roundabouts fix, fix the issue we're talking about for now. I mean, the rest of it won't change for twenty-five, thirty years. I mean, it's not gonna.
Having said, you don't even need the roundabouts for that matter.
You know, Scott, you keep saying that, but one thing to keep in mind, and I'm not advocating like we fill up Dayton, but we've talked about a little about Salt Dayton might be easier to develop than North Dayton. The challenge in Salt Dayton is no roads, so we gotta get the road, otherwise, you know, we got, each, each section has its own challenge, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So you can't say that that road's not, that, those roads gotta happen before that, otherwise.
You gotta have them on a map.
Oh, which we can't have, we shouldn't have development if the roads don't go in, period.
So just, just kinda piggybacking on what this roundabout and extended Dayton Parkway, just, just a thought that I was running through to keep DDL much happier is running along the south property line, run your extension along the south property line and then come up.
So go through three, then we have the three or four residential lots there.
On, on, on the backside of them.
Okay, so you have the backside.
And then this lot, they've been cleaning that house up.
Yeah.
I imagine they're selling.
More people are ready to sell than people realize.
And, and what that, what that would allow us to do though, there's, there's a few things that, that we're not taking into consideration. We're talking about it up here, but that would allow us to then connect down here to, to the business districts we already have and potentially run a connection down to this property here that we're having a hard time developing from the north. And so there's a lot of, lot of little benefits in the real immediate future if we were to bring that roundabout straight to the east. And today, you know, today it doesn't have to be Dayton Parkway, but in the future it could be, you come through the roundabout and then you kinda snake your way up.
Yeah, to me, the way you impact the least amount of properties is that that's the right alignment. And the alignment that's on that map right now impacts, can there every one of them in the whole square mile?
With a major roadway though, Scott, I mean, I, I agree with you, least amount, but with a major roadway, no matter how you draw it, there's gonna be people.
Oh, you're gonna get some, yeah.
I guarantee you, even farmers involved are gonna hate it at first because it bisects their field, hate it because they still gotta farm until everything's right for development, they're gonna hate it.
Yeah.
Okay, did we go backward far enough?
Oh, yeah, we're, let's.
You know, we could keep talking about this transportation because I think it's important, but the one thing that's not gonna change is the concept of the town center and densities and it's, the question is, where's the blob and how's the road get there? Still needs to be figured out, but the rest of it concepts are similar.
Yeah, the town center might, fifty years from now, it might move.
Right, and so one concept I wanted to throw out to you guys is I'm with Kevin that you can't go too high on densities, units per acre, but immediately next to mixed use, actually, let me ask this question, if we had a centralized stormwater pond somewhere, because we might need it if we pack stuff in there, is that part of the Met Council's density calculations to our knowledge?
Not if it's a regional stormwater pond.
There we go, so now, all these little things start adding up. So I'm a big fan of, you know what, right next to the mixed use area, I'm okay going thirty units an acre. Now, we can't do thirty units an acre everywhere in Dayton, but right next to it, by the time it develops, it might even be forty units, forty units per acre by then. So I'm okay really getting that really higher right next to the mixed use area.
So having an entire new land use category that would be.
Higher.
Something higher than high density residential.
Well, and that was part of my issue with actually making a master plan this big, it's hard to master plan six hundred acres.
Yep.
Like, master planning the mixed use area, the red area and the high density around it makes a lot more sense than everything. Now, obviously, you need to talk about everything as part of the concept, but, but that's what I'd advocate for is higher units or closer to the commercial and mixed use area, like thirty units. And it doesn't mean we can't still have some other high density at twenty units an acre closer to the major intersections, it looks like there's gonna be three major intersections. East French Lake Road, whatever the new road is and 125th. To me, that's where you wanna have the concentrations and you're closer to those intersections because it's easier than for residents to get in and out without least impact on the roads.
Right, yeah, you'd wanna have the highest density on them.
And maybe even another small commercial blob at one, one or two of those corners. And that, that can be always tackled when the development's occurring because you just gotta adapt. But the main thing is getting the density right, and I wanna get the density as high as possible here so when you deal with the rest of the city for the next comp plan, we don't have to scramble and say, oh my God, we just gotta throw something here like they did last time to hit the density requirement.
No, I agree, the four, the four-story building makes a lot of sense versus three.
By the time it gets developed, if it's ten years from now, it might be five or six stories, is the standard. It's not gonna go down, I can tell you that.
So I, I think we're getting hung up on this map and property lines and what they look like today. I'm thinking, you know, the big picture of, you know, what is it gonna look like in twenty, thirty years from now for the types of densities and layouts and all that? You know, I'm thinking if we came up with a few different scenarios of what does, you know, apartments here and commercial there and, and more detailed versus bubble diagram.
Yeah, I would, I mean, put the property lines on there like John said, but we can't have, like, when you look at this, when you see where the obvious, wherever the roads are, they might shift, we get it, but make the land uses make sense with our new road patterns. Don't have half-high-density divided by a road, like, that's my other suggestion is, depending on what happens with Dayton Parkway, is I would be completely okay with this all becoming industrial or business park between these two roads here. As well as this, like, if nothing changed, we didn't move the road, this whole area becoming industrial where DDL is. And then as well as the area north of it, cause they're all sandwiched in by roads and that's where you separate stuff.
Why, uh, so one of the things I'm surprised by is how little commercial there is in this example, and I would think you'd want commercial up and down the Parkway, at least on the east side.
And that's what Dennis, that's what I was saying, is that each of these major intersections, we should have some more commercial as well as high density concentrated.
So when we started this, we're looking at one square mile and I think the number we're getting to is about twenty, thirty acres of commercial.
This one, uh, right now it's at sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty acres commercial is a lot, that's all, it's a lot.
So how we do the math, if you take sixty acres, times it by the square footage, so that's two point six million square feet and then we divide it by six, cause that's usually the land to building ratio, that's four hundred thirty-five thousand square feet of commercial space. Which would be five to six big boxes and the reality is you'll be lucky to get a big box here. You'll get a grocery store big box, but not a big, big box.
So in place who will want big boxes?
I'm not saying you want them, but certain people do.
They can go to Maple Grove or Chandler.
I don't think a big box is gonna come here, I don't think a big box is gonna come here today.
For ten minutes, you can go anywhere to.
Unless it's a Target with a grocery store or something like that.
Just point of reference, Target on Maple Grove Parkway and six-ten is about fourteen acres.
Yep.
Just.
Yeah. That's a lot of commercial we have, and you know, if that commercial doesn't pan out, it just becomes probably high density. And so you'd work from the road to the east and then you'd pivot at some point.
I just looked at some of the major roads around here and I guess Parkway wouldn't necessarily be considered a major, but it's major for us. And it's commercial up and down there.
I would call it major, Dennis, when it's actually, when we're fully built up, not, yeah, it'll be major.
And, and not that I, yeah, I, I get it, that there's probably a lot of, a lot of people wouldn't necessarily want commercial, it just seems odd that you don't have any area like this strip where if somebody wants to go somewhere, they, they can go there, but.
Well, it depends on what kind of commercial, right? Like.
Yeah, it does.
I, I would be all for a, you know, locally owned coffee shop, bakery, nice little place to stop, you're like.
Yeah.
I mean, not that we're gonna be it, but I was just in North Branch for conference and like that strip is just such a, it's a nice strip. That commercial I can get behind all day long. I don't even have a fucking target.
I'll tell you the reality, the reality of how it works, and it could be different, is that the small, non-nationals
Oh, yeah.
generally can't afford the rents associated with new construction costs, it's that simple. It's not, it's not the land value, it's the new construction cost, they just, it's too much.
So there's, so the question, so I guess my point is that there's different kinds of commercial and some are far more desirable, particularly for, like, Dayton is a different kind of community, I'd like to stand in like a smaller. So the other question is, how can we find ways to encourage those kind of small businesses? And if new development is not the most feasible way for them for many reasons, maybe we put our energy in other places, like, how can we encourage Rain Tree Plaza to, you know, can we, is there any way we can encourage them to expand or improve or whatever? How do we focus in the historic village? Cause there are people in the historic village who are obviously like, they just came through, right, with their thing, with their new project, the townhomes? And we had no guidance for them for the historic village, it's like, I feel like we're putting all of our energy here for something that's like fifty years from now, when there's actually places that are today coming through and wanting guidance.
This is not fifty years from now, from my view, this is less than ten years from now if we had a road built, but it's, it's not gonna be built in ten years, so.
Hey, do you wanna be mindful on times when you have twenty minutes to provide some type of direction?
Yeah, so.
Did you get, you got your direction, right?
No.
No?
Not even a little bit.
Not even a little bit? Fix the problem that's there.
It's good discussion, but there's no, there was no direction, not, no can, I mean, like, there's a lot of good ideas and there's overlapping between all the ideas and the, some of the direction, but it's easiest for staff, both John and myself, to have really clear direction afterwards to know what path we're taking to move forward. Because some of these questions have implications outside the master plan. And so knowing if we're pursuing, or if staff's looking at a separate work effort to look at other things before we pursue with the master plan changes or removing with the master plan changes now as we previously, I presented earlier, things like that are outstanding questions, I don't think, I have not heard direction on some of those. Also, I've heard ideas thrown out about some of the land use, so like sixty acres of commercial is a little high, but it was kept on there given the fact that our existing had like a hundred and sixty acres of commercial.
Pivot.
Um, so just understanding how you wanna see those changes happen, so right now the commercial, and don't forget, the mixed use does have a commercial component to it, it's mostly, it's sixty percent residential, forty percent commercial, so there is more commercial in that area. And then there is the two parcels on the north boundary of the master plan right here, these are neighborhood commercial, right up here. So there are some landing points for additional commercial, but I just wanna understand what specific changes you would like to see, cause the more defined you can get, the better direction I can have. And then I can make all the numbers work to make sure that we're above our density goals and if we go above, you know, we're at five thousand units, say we're at fifty-six hundred, then when the comp plan comes around, you have six hundred units to figure out elsewhere in the city that you could drop some densities. Cause I think that is one of the goals that I've heard is to have that wiggle room later on for when you look at the next comp plan update.
What was the business, just that the, in the bottom left there, yeah, what, what drove that?
Oh, that was a recommendation from the planning commission from Darren.
The recommendations for one of the options, the show and option with potentially more industrial.
Yeah, so this is, to give you an idea, it doesn't have to be exactly here and it could extend completely between the two proposed roadways, so this
Sure.
purple could go all the way over to this intersection here.
Yep.
To give you an idea of acreage, that, what I show right here is fifty-four acres.
And even if that, we somehow do get that road to move, that's probably still viable, right?
So is there a consensus to have more industrial?
Cause that was an outstanding question, we didn't know, and planning commissioner wasn't sure, does the council members do, do you want more industrial? Cause we have, we've had a lot of it coming in, do you want more?
And if you want, if you want more industrial, what kind? Because you can dictate the type of industrial by zoning code, like, if you don't want more eighty thousand square foot warehouses, that's, that's the feedback, because then that means it needs to be zoned something differently that doesn't allow that. But it still allows industrial, like, for example, more smaller users like, uh, the two applications I came through, I understand one fell apart, where they were putting up a thirty thousand square foot building with the small outdoor storage.
Over the glass, yeah.
Yeah. But, so if you want more, what, what do you want it to look like too?
Well, ideally Dayton's gonna need some sort of, uh, small, how do I, how do I, like a plumber's building, uh.
Yes, there's tons of contractors, landscapers, plumbers, you name it.
We have none of that.
Right, and they don't have a place to go legally.
They don't have a place to go.
Seems like we have enough landscapers.
And the same thing challenges if you put industrial park, a lot of people, it's just gonna price them with their business model, to go into something new, it just, new construction is expensive.
So am I hearing yes, more industrial?
I don't. Personally, I don't think, don't change a thing, leave it the way it is.
I can't answer that.
All right, I'm okay with it too.
Dennis, what was your?
I, I can't answer that, I, I don't know.
Okay, so we have one and one and one.
No, don't know, yes.
Uh, for the planning commission?
To me, none of that's really important, the roadway is the most important thing to fix.
Let's just say the roadway was shifted, do we want more industrial someplace? And so what kind?
Yeah, cause there's, you have two.
I'm in favor of yes, I would not be, I'd be more in favor of smaller industrial users or heavy employment industrial users.
Okay, so manufacturing or small businesses?
Right.
Small business more than anything.
I think, especially as you get further north, you don't wanna drive a bunch of distributions up there, cause you're just pushing the truck traffic further north too. So manufacturing and more small, like service contractors, you know, that's what I'd be.
With or without outdoor storage?
Well, if you're gonna do contractors, you have to have outdoor storage, they need it, they need it.
It's pretty or not, they need it.
Well, they're gonna have it whether they're allowed to or not, so we might as well.
You gotta trust that, we're gonna get the allowed part figured out.
Okay.
It's gonna take a while, but.
But, I mean, I'd rather put restrictions on to, like, I'd rather put restrictions to make allowable, like.
Make it allowed the first place.
Yes, and then put restrictions around it so that it doesn't become an eyesore.
Yeah, and it's already allowed in I-1 today, it's just that it's capped at twenty percent of.
Right, but just keep in mind, we're still talking about twelve to fifteen thousand people that are living next to where, whatever it is that we.
The way this sets up is, if you put it between those roads, there's not gonna be, again, if you look at the topography to the west of the current alignment, I don't know what you're gonna put there. It just drops down to French Lake Road, or French Lake Steep. And if you go to the east, there's already the natural road buffer and then you hit the whole Dubay Park area, so you have another pinch point. That's why, I mean, if you look at this and you can just pass it around, it's, it's a natural pinch point between these green areas and lake areas that it seems like we should try to protect. And you just, it's hard to put stuff there, and that's what I would like, I mean, if I did this, I would have a park system that kinda connects the parks, so the people that are living in eventually a high-density area have trails in a park system that loops around, but. And most of what I'm saying is parks not developable anyway, it's already swamped.
Well.
I mean, it's just, just an idea with bubbles.
Asking for direction, things that would help me make informed decisions, seeing the topography, right, that would be helpful. Seeing where the wetlands are, that would be helpful, cause right now a lot of, I'm going back and forth, I'm looking at your map, I'm going back to the topography. So like, if we could have it all in one, that would just be helpful to make informed decisions. It sounds like more than anything else, if we're gonna fix that roadway, or maybe not fix it, but add a different option, that needs to be decided, like, I feel like that needs to come first before everything else.
Yeah, if, if the consensus is you wanna really explore that, we should pause everything until that answer comes, in my opinion.
Cause if that. We can, but I think like that commercial's not gonna move much. The, the business park, that's not gonna, that's probably.
I mean, pause, pause going forward, like presenting to the public.
Oh, certainly.
That stuff, not necessarily pause with the ideas.
No, it's a big change.
I think the direction is, like, if that's an option you'd like to pursue, then I won't look for possible open house dates and try to start scheduling, is that any public hearing notice? Just from a implementation, going the next step.
This is my opinion, but quite frankly, if there's division, we shouldn't be going, presenting to the public, we need to have our stuff figured out.
Right, so the, the schedule is first the planning commission, then to the open house, then to council. So there is a meeting where planning commission gets to review and say, yeah, this looks good, we're on board, there's some minor tweaks, but in general, everything looks good. That's the version that would then go to the open house for the public. There is another opportunity to make sure that what comes out of today and what comes out of the future would then have another chance to be reviewed. But if we want, if the goal is to explore some more roadway options and how the connections happen and that needs to happen before we can make consensus on some of the land use decisions and things like that in the master plan, then if that's the direction, then that's the way we should go and I'll, I'll pause some of those meeting dates that are coming up for the master plan piece and then I think it would be probably to Jason and John and Zach to bring something to council in terms of what that effort would look like for the roadway options. And then that would happen before the master plan, we kinda do a pause while that would happen.
I think that makes sense, because we don't wanna bring something to the public that we're halfway through changing. And that doesn't, that doesn't help anything. And the other thing for, for me, I mean, looking at this in two dimensions, you know, I can align that roadway now, but I think we really need to know more about what's possible in terms of the topography, you know, what wetland is, you know, does the, the line that you'd like to draw on there, what does that actually go through? And so if it, you know, if it doesn't work well, then what do we gotta do to it to make it work?
So.
I don't know, I think that's gotta happen first.
That's why I drew the map I drew, is I was like, I gotta see, that's on a topo map. And with the aerials, I was like, I can't make, I can't visually make sense of it until I put it on a map that has that stuff and turn the layers on and off.
In ten minutes, so I've got direction that, you know.
Five for me.
We're, we're gonna look at road realignment in a few different options, so let's say we figure that out. As far as the different types of land use, I'm, this is kinda, I'm trying to recap this. Yes to having more industrial, but it, it's small industrial, not big distribution centers.
Not in other cubes. Not in other cubes.
Sure, it's more, we'll we'll figure it out. Smaller, smaller industrial.
Doesn't really fit anything we have all that we can figure it out.
Yep. Uh, I'm hearing more in density.
Closer to the, closer to the mixed use. It doesn't have to extend everywhere, but closer to the mixed use area.
Sure. Um, having more, I'm gonna call it more of a downtown at historic, traditional downtown versus a suburban downtown and and.
That would be my preference.
I don't know the difference, so.
Yeah, what's.
I don't know the difference.
I know.
I'm gonna say walkable community versus a drivable.
Yes, yes.
Walkable, walkable, hundred percent.
Yeah.
Currently, the master plan has that in there. So the that was the survey strongly on the resident survey component was having the walkable downtown. So the way you typically do that is built form. So you bring the buildings forward, you put parking in the back. You make landscape and additional enhancements on the street. You make lots of walkability areas in terms of sidewalks, bike, pet, everything like that, safety. That's currently the way it's drafted. So that is in there current.
Hey, we're happy with something.
I just wanted to check one thing off the list of about seven others, so.
Okay. So right now, we're looking at big bubble diagrams. Do you want something that's a lot more detailed?
No.
I don't need more detail, but I'd prefer that your colors match up with the roads. And your change of land, I get it, it's gonna split land uses on parcels. But to visually conceptualize what's going on here, we shouldn't use the existing parcel lines to visualize land uses.
Okay.
And if that means that might even dictate why you shift a road a little bit one way or another to get on the property line. I don't know. But when the when the roads are bisecting property lines, I think we have to think about the uses in between the roads.
Yep, okay.
Um, now it cut the road off that heads east out of the, that shows.
I won't show anything to you out there, yeah.
Okay.
And I would, you know, I would also consider East French Lake Road. Are we really just gonna stop it right when it hits this road? Or are we gonna continue it north? Seems to me you should continue it north on the outskirts of the mixed use area up to one twenty fifth. But I don't know. That's, but it's part of the master plan area, so if we're gonna do that, we should show the whole road. Does that make sense what I said?
Yeah, we we'll have different scenarios.
Yeah, yeah. So instead of just stopping here, it would snake along wherever this edge is up to one twenty fifth.
Yeah, I mean, E- East French Lake Road needs to be reconfigured somehow.
Yeah, if you're gonna show, yeah. And I would show it going all the way up to where we think we want it to go, wherever that is.
Mm hmm.
Right now, it just shows like it's ending, but that doesn't make sense.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I didn't show anything that would be considered more of a local, less trafficked road, so it's.
And the idea is that.
It's not that it stops, it's that I'm, development will probably dictate where that falls.
I think it's gotta go all the way up to a hundred and twenty fifth if we're gonna sandwich this area with high density.
It will, yeah. I completely agree. I just, we weren't showing the local connections, because there's a lot of, as you can see, there's a lot of low missing connections in here because it's just arterial.
Now, I'm thinking that this won't be a local. This will be one of the main roads as an alternative road versus Dayton Parkway once you get there.
I just wanted to clarify, just so you.
Okay, parks. So we we have two natural, big natural features. So one French Lake in the area that the lower ground along French Lake, and then we have Dubay Lake.
That's enough.
Okay.
I think we need to identify Dubay Lake in here if that's what people want. I mean, obviously, it's not developed, the lake itself is not developable.
Yep.
The area around it, if you wanna protect it, you should identify it.
Okay, in the master plan and the public opinion survey, there's a desire for like a town square or some something, I'm gonna call it something different than what you typically, well, what we, anything that would like.
It was like an open space plaza town center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Courthouse in the middle and.
Yep.
Step around the edges.
Kenneth County Courthouse. What, where would you like that? Or do would you, do you wanna see a couple of different scenarios of one closer to French Lake and another one closer to to Dubay Lake?
So what what I'm envisioning in my head, and this kind of gets to what you were talking earlier with the downtown Main Street, I'm thinking Main Street, Maple Grove, where where you've got the the small little restaurants. You got a couple of big box behind them. And then you have that lake, the the pond there for that.
It's about each side.
With all the trails.
Yep, with all the trails. That's that's kind of what I'm envisioning for our downtown. Not much bigger than that. That's probably, it actually fits within the sixty acres.
Would that be right to Bay Lake or what?
No, that'd be budding up to the park on French Lake.
Oh, it should be, okay.
Currently, the plan that's been done is that all the paint is mixed use, and that's your town center.
Okay.
Um, built form close, walkable, um, everything like that leads into, and because this was what the residents said, this is, it doesn't show on here because we're just showing park as the future land use, but in the descriptions for what that area is utilized as, it's an open space plaza park, so things like.
Sure.
Um, kind of like not not the, we're not just being a courthouse, but something like that where it's like more open space that leads into then being able to utilize the open space of French Lake. And the existing comp plan has trails along French Lake. So incorporating all those, and maybe we show the trails on here additionally so that that comes out as part of the master plan. Um, I really just took off everything but land use on this image. Is that basically this park gets developed as part of that like town center plaza space that leads into an open space park with trails that could then lead and snake around French Lake and potentially come back so that people could. The idea is be in the town center area, visit the open space plaza park, do a little walk, come back, go back to their car wherever it is over here, and that's what they use their day for.
From a practicality standpoint and walking, the what was Dubay Lake? What's the name of that lake?
Dubay.
Yeah, that one's smaller. I mean, the average person's not walking around Diamond. Like, that's just, that lake's too big.
French Lake?
Yeah.
I think a trail, I think literally a trail down to Dubay Lake and back, which is one of the points I wanted to make is we probably should have the park commission involved and have a separate park plan, because this is six hundred acres. If this is really what our master plan's gonna be, it's big. And so we just wanna make sure it's in line with whatever's going on. What are your thoughts too?
Um, would you cross the Parkway?
What's that?
It.
Dubay would be on the side of the Parkway.
Dubay would, correct. So and I'm assuming our park plan, I looked at it, it's kind of high level. But there's ideas of trails connecting all the way to Elm Creek Park, so making sure that that trail goes down to Dubay Lake and maybe it could even come back up the other way so you can kind of loop, do a loop trail back to the town center if you wanted.
That'd be a much nicer trail than than on on.
On French Lake.
On French Lake.
Yeah.
When you're going through all the.
Well, it's just that, because we we go to Maple Grove to do that little walk around that little lake. It's beautiful, nice little.
Well, and you could, you could put in connections to the 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 Bravon Trails neighborhood. That would eventually lead you into Elm Creek, you know.
That's right. When I sent that around, that's what that green line was. And again, I looked at the park trail. Looks like that's workable, but we should have that incorporated into our master plan. This is the park plan to make sure that the ideas are there.
Okay.
All right, I gotta bail. I'm sorry.
Okay, so just real quick in three minutes or less. Uh, we'll do some scenario planning for moving Dayton Parkway, um, and some kind of route for East French Lake Road. Um, so, you know, first priority, that's gonna totally pause the master plan for months.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
I'm assuming that you can have rough figures because we we already know what Dayton Parkway costs, so I wouldn't overkill it. I mean, we know what it costs per foot to build Dayton Parkway, what we didn't build.
So.
So I wouldn't overkill it.
Okay.
Don't say months. It's, the numbers are there.
Um, okay, uh, as far as the land use goes, uh, more manufacturing and small industrial businesses, more dense density for apartments. We haven't talked much about single family at all.
There's not much in here, though.
I don't think.
No, there's not.
The only chunk was actually where Dubay Lake was.